Ms. King will be joining us in a few minutes. Mr. Rass is making the trip around. So to begin, just wanted, I guess, to give a little quick background. Obviously, recreation has been something that we've heard a number of times from the audience in this past six or seven months about dissatisfaction with different things within the recreation. The upkeep and maintenance of the fields, the need for capital improvement on certain things like tennis courts and others. And we currently found ourselves at a situation where the public, the IGA, the intergovernmental agreement with the PSA and the different cities, municipalities, county, needs to be renewed. And so we have kind of been exploring the opportunity, the possibility, had discussions with folks from PSA and some of the other cities, what it would look like possibly for the city of St. Mary's to take over the maintenance and operations of its facilities, with public service authorities still providing the programming services and support for the sports. And so that's partly what we're here to discuss tonight, kind of look at what that might look like, what it would take for the city. And, you know, one of the things we kept kind of coming back with is that the expectations for recreation within the city of St. Mary's might be different from what the other municipalities or the county wants. I kind of get the feeling, I personally, and I think from what I'm hearing, that we want a higher level quality of recreation, recreational opportunities for our citizens, for the businesses that we're trying to attract, and the new families that are moving in. And so that's kind of why we're going down this road. And so staff has prepared some things. We've had a shout out to Mr. Hahn there in the audience, who has an extensive background in managing recreation departments in South Florida, has provided us some expertise and some guidance on things we need to be looking at. And so with that, you ready to take over there, Mr. City Manager?
I think you did very well, sir.
Thank you.
Would you like for me to go over the paperwork real quick?
Yeah, let's go over what you put before us and...
All right. So, good evening, council. So I've provided you with the, with three deeds to properties. There, on two of them, I've written, I think I wrote them on the bottom, and one I wrote at the top. We've got the Margaret Street, the deed to the Margaret Street field. We have the deed to the Aquatic Park field. And we have the deed to Sweetwater. There's four parks in the city of St. Mary's, the last one being Nodder's Pond. That is a static park that is upkept by PSA, but it is the property of the city of St. Mary's and that sort of stuff. So in short version, the Margaret Street Park, that is the property of the city of St. Mary's. The Aquatic Park is the property of the PSA. It was quick deeded over to the PSA from the city of St. Mary's. And the one that is hard to read, and I apologize, but Mr. Jones apparently has one that we can read easier because he was there when they did the original. Sorry. I won't say the date, long, long time ago, that that was actually deeded over. But that is actually owned by the Sweetwater Recreational Authority, and PSA operates that park. So that's what each one of those documents are. The last one, the mayor asked me to put together some numbers associated with if we were to operate the parks, what those numbers would look like. So I have tried to provide you with an estimate on what I think it would take to be able to do that. So, there you go, sir.
And so I'll say that we, you know, in some of our preliminary discussions, you know, we have mentioned about the Aquatic Center Park, and that our desire would be that it would be quick claimed, uh, quick claimed back to us for the purpose of ownership and being able to apply for grants and clarity upon the fact that we would be making improvements to that property. And it obviously simplifies the whole process. And there is, we were told there'd be no issue with that. That was something that could happen pretty quickly, so we make that happen. We need to still have some ongoing conversations, although there's been some initial, initial talk with SWABRA about Sweetwater to that effect as well, in order for the city to be able to take over maintenance and operations there. One of the things that, I guess, kind of surprised, surprised me, and maybe Mr. Horton as well, county is already kind of looking at taking over its fields or taking over maintenance and operations. City of Kingsland has said, well, if y'all are gonna do it, we're on board with, kind of doing it too with our two fields. And so we went from just kind of not necessarily forcing that issue on everybody, we just wanted to do what we wanted to do, to now there seems to be a ground swell that maybe that's, that's gonna happen across the board. And that PSA will, moving forward after October 1st, potentially, if it all happens between now and then, would really not have any capacity for grounds maintenance, other than where the rec center is and maintaining the building and the facilities there, but not necessarily then be involved in the maintaining of parks, mowing and cutting throughout the county or whatever. So that's kind of where we stand. And I guess I'd like to, let's start by kind of opening up the council for comments about the intended process, what questions we have, and then we can make, we can hear from the audience as well. But anybody on council, anything you'd like to say? Go ahead, Ms. Connor.
Claire, do you want something?
Use the microphone.
Thank you. The Aquatic Center parks, we're talking about the fields themselves, they belong to the PSA currently, is that correct?
That's what we believe.
Yes, sir. That entire park belongs to the PSA.
The Aquatic Center as well.
With the exception of the Aquatic Center.
Okay, so the Aquatic Center is the city's?
Yes.
Okay.
Does that include the land that it sits on?
That still has yet to be determined. There is, there is an agreement somewhere, and I have gone through boxes and boxes and boxes, Ms. Walker-Reed has as well, all of her staff has, trying to find an agreement. There is not, we haven't been able to find it. But knowing the time and the political, what was going on politically between ourselves and the county and things of that nature, and the attorney that was involved at the time, there's, there's gotta be an agreement somewhere to allow us to build it. But I believe that land belongs to PSA from what I, the way I read it. We just had permission to build it.
Because we granted that to them at some point.
Yes, ma'am. You have, you have, you have the agreement. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I don't know if that makes any sense, but...
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
But like I said, that, you know, the, they've already kind of indicated their willingness to, you know, quick claim that back over to us, so it kind of becomes a moot point once that occurs, so.
Yes.
So are they talking about quick claiming the tennis courts and everything back to us?
Yes. That is correct. The entire, all the property associated with the deed that you have in your hand, quick claiming it back to the city.
Just as soon as we get that done, then we can start seeing some things done by the county.
We are already starting on doing some things, actually, and it's not to rain on my manager's report, but Mr. Williams is already working on getting on an IRFP for the tennis courts that are on there, having those redone. And we've kind of, we've talked through a plan for how to handle our parks and things of that nature, as far as redoing and up cleaning and expanding and things of that nature. So we'll hopefully have that for you in the very near future, be able to put before council, so you can kind of see our plan.
And I guess the other part I didn't specifically talk about is, we currently pay the PSA, and of course, that number will probably change as it changes annually, but in the realm of about $650,000 a year for the services that we receive from PSA. And what our initial proposal looks like is that we got quotes and estimates from them as to what it was, what they were spending currently to do the maintenance that they were doing on our fields. And that number ran somewhere to the $170,000, $180,000 a year, was that right? Or was it the 250? The 250?
I understand.
Okay. And so we also discovered, or they discovered, that there was a set of lights, new LED lights that was put in on the ball fields, on the Margaret Street fields a few years back, that current management, I guess, with the changeover, there was an annual payment of $70,000 a year that they had lost track of, and then that payment came due a few months back. And there's one more payment due on that next year. And so we proposed basically that in the first year, we would keep back $180,000 of that, of that 650 or so, to leave that 70,000 in there to make that last payment on the, on those lights that are on our fields. And then after that, we would increase that number up to the 250 that we're holding back from, you know, and then they would get the rest of the money that would cover the programs, the upkeep of the facility out there as well, which the gymnastics and the other things that, you know, certainly are open to our citizens, our citizens' use in that facility, as well as, like I say, the staff or the programming and the other things that are going on out there. So that's kind of initial proposal that's being discussed. It's part of the money that we would have to go towards what we're gonna do on maintenance and operations. And as we get into it, and as we decide how quickly we want to go, and on what level we want our fields to be at, I mean, there's, there's Atlanta Braves outfield, you know, there's Brunswick Junior College, or what used to be Coastal College, you know, Brunswick Junior, back in the day, you know, that's what we got now. There's different levels of, you know, where we want to be. And, you know, there's things to look at as far as, we're gonna be getting some numbers on the numbers of youths in the different age categories to help determine what appropriately-sized playing fields we need, you know, do we need 200-foot outfield, or do we need, you know, 320-foot outfield, you know? And how many of those to meet kind of where our population is and our estimates? Because there's no, no reason to maintain a 320-foot outfield if we're only using 200-foot of it is what's really needed. And of course, the maintenance cost there goes, goes way down on the, on the smaller outfield. But things like redoing the infield with the proper sand and clay mix, getting them leveled to make them safe and to play on, there's, there's things with the fences, the aren't really tall enough to keep you from flipping over if you're a little bit taller person. We don't have proper warning tracks and things like that out there. There's a lot of things that we'll, we'll be able to start working on in a process. And like I said, we hope to, right off the bat, get the tennis courts, potentially some pickleball courts included with that, done there at the Aquatic Center, and then start looking at potentially the Margaret Street fields. My intention maybe would be, and you know, obviously it's council decision, to, to try to, you know, pick out, you know, one or two fields that we really want to get to that traveling ball level, you know, quality field that our traveling, local traveling teams can, can play on, practice on, prepare on, also potentially host other teams to come and play. And, and then just kind of take the other levels up from poor to good or better, you know? And, and over time, maybe we can get the best for everything. But the other part of this is identifying some staff to send through, some training for turf management, you know, to take them beyond just mow and go, to the, where they're actually taking care of the turf, growing the turf the way it needs to be done, doing the proper fertilization there, aeration, the vertical cutting, and the other kinds of things that need to be done in order to, to have a field that, that looks like what we see on TV, so.
Just because I know we have some pickleball players in the room, one of the things I discovered doing my research on the pickleball courts is that there's a recommended distance from the pickleball courts to residential homes, because of the sounds that are produced, it's actually stronger than a tennis court, which that just, I didn't realize that. So we're kind of looking at, if things happen the way we've kind of envisioned, of possibly being able to put those on the Sweetwater Park because of the distance needed to separate, so.
Well, Ms. King can testify to the grunting and stuff that, when she plays with the mat.
Some players do that.
I also heard, I also heard that there was some moaning involved with some players as well.
We had the opportunity to play in Tifton when we would have a newly elected municipal training, a very nice facility they have over there in Tifton, and, but anyway. Any other comments before we open it up to the public?
You didn't want to finish your story about what happened?
Huh? What happened? Well, I took a tumble? I scared, scared Mr. Nasaminto when I rolled into the net?
I thought we were going to the hospital.
Diving for a ball? Still here walking and talking.
That's right.
You gotta want it bad.
That's right.
Yes, sir.
Um, you know, I think it's big with what we're doing right now, with our fields and everything, our pickleball courts, potentially tennis courts, et cetera, et cetera, but we're going to have to expand. I mean, the fields that we have on Margaret Street, we've only got three fields. I talked to Steve a little earlier, we're talking about potentially, out here where we played baseball, what's the name of that place again? Sweetwater Park. We talked about that. And, you know, I just want to see the city of St. Mary's be good in everything we do, regardless if it's for the kids, the adults, or whatever, because our citizens and our taxpayers deserve to get the best possible within the city of St. Mary's. We want people to say, you know something, St. Mary's is so good, I wish I could move over there, you know? I tell you something, our little city is awesome, and we've got people like Artie and other people that are working, that worked hard in past years with the PSA on these fields. Let's take it to a next step, to a next step. And I think all of our citizens will be really happy with that. If we can get five pickleball park, parks, I don't, I mean, courts, I don't know where we would put them right now, unless, let's build five. I don't know how the funding will go, but we'll find out that somehow, some way.
Make it ten.
What's that?
I was, I was giving Robbie a hard time.
Yeah.
I agree.
Well, Robbie, Robbie does a good job.
I like your enthusiasm. Five courts make a lot of people happy.
That's right. Make me happy.
All right. So we've got maybe 20 minutes or so before we need to close up, so I'll open, open the mic up to the public. If you have anything you want to chime in on this issue, and then maybe we can dive into the numbers just a little bit more, whatever, but...
Larry White, 102 Silvius Court. My question is, when would all this take place, the transfer of those fields to the city?
Well, most of the other municipalities are running on an October fiscal year, so we hope to have it all done and taking place and moving forward before October.
Okay. But our fiscal year runs from June?
July.
To July. So my question is, have you done a comparison between the cost that the county runs for PSA, for maintaining these fields, and what it would cost a city to maintain these fields?
Right. We've been working on that, and of course, it's, it's the classic apples and oranges kind of thing, because what we're getting now is not what we want.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
And so, you know, it, you know, to get where we want to go is probably gonna cost a little bit more money, you know? But yeah, I mean, that's one of the things we're looking at here. I mean, you know, we're looking at two, two full-time personnel, you know, to maintain the four parks. And, you know, right now, that's with everything, benefits and everything included, you know, around $111,000 for those two employees. Equipment, you know, first year, pickup truck, trailer, lawnmower, those kinds of things, you know, potentially $55,000. And then you have a number of different drags and things to take care of the ball fields, chalk line, you know, the lines and that kind of stuff, another $4,600. Of course, we'll be taking over the utilities of the, of the fields, the lights and those kinds of things, up to $22,000 or whatever. You know, kind of within that $180,000, you know, range, to kind of do the bare minimum, you know, where we go from there, you know, as far as capital improvements, is where the, the expense is gonna happen. And, you know, and what we all know is that there have been no capital improvements really other than these light fixtures that have been occurring at the fields. And that's where we're gonna run into the expense, and then figuring out how we're gonna pay for it as we move forward. You know, hopefully we'll be able to get some grants and those kinds of things, especially once we have possession of, of the other parks, and...
So that leads to my last comment. I know our budget starts in the 1st of July, so has that contingency been built into the budget, or are we gonna have to come back in the middle of the fiscal year to say this is how much more we need?
Right. We'll definitely be looking at a budget ordinance amendment at some point in time.
Some of the, one of the funding sources that we've addressed is in coming out of Splo State, being able to pull those, that equipment, the pickup truck, the trailer, and the mowers and trackers, because those are capital purchases. We've got those earmarked in Splo State.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Good afternoon. Nick Harris, 102 Hamlet Circle. I'm thinking, throwing it out, that we're partially taking over a problem to help St. Mary's, but there's more to just cutting and mowing and putting chalk lines. I think as a city as small as us, and I've lived in smaller cities than this, in medium-sized cities, and we've done extremely well, but we need to kind of think about owning the recreational programs too, because when you have ball fields and you're trying to get dads and moms out there, concessions brings in money to maintain those things, the fees that just cost for travel ball, or just cost recreational to play, and then it gives the coaches responsibility. It's, it's not the government's sole responsibility or the city's sole responsibility. And I'm just gonna be blunt with you, our problem in St. Mary's, and probably gonna offend some people, is we have no civic pride. We're just always looking for somebody to give us money and make the quick fix. The way we make St. Mary's the place to be, to make everybody say, I want to be in St. Mary's, is civic pride and engagement. Everybody's involved. We do a lot of talking, but we don't execute. So I think now is the time, if we're gonna own those facilities, there's dads, there's parents, there's coaches out there, they line those fields, they keep them up because they're the, their kids, their athletes are playing on it. I don't think we're gonna do anything except increase the, an expense to go out and cut grass and make it look kind of pretty. But if you're looking to start from beginning to travel ball, and one day bring jamborees or tournaments here, you need the community involvement, because I can tell you, I can guarantee you, and I'm not taking anything away from you, but if you don't have the community engaged in it, you're just wasting money.
Ken John, 102 South Grass Trace here in St. Mary's, as mayor, council members. Only 100% am I broke with your thought process, your ideas, and your initiative to start moving forward with this plan. Civic engagement's gonna happen. That'll happen. That'll come along with the development that the city's gonna be able to do and execute once we have control of it. So again, I think it's an excellent initiative on all of your parts to look at this carefully with the vision of moving forward and making it happen. Thank you.
Good evening. Christine Adamo, 901 Ann Street. I think it's a brilliant idea. I have been advocating for almost two years that the city pull out of PSA. And I believe the line item in there, this particular budget, was over $900,000 for our contribution to PSA. So if you pull that out, we've got plenty of money to start this thing. But what I'm not hearing, and what is disconcerting to me, is there are two elements here. There's programming, which Mr. Connor is very well aware of, and there's plant management, asset management, which you guys know. We have other assets in this city that are not being managed properly. They're losing money. So when you consider pulling out and managing tracts of land that have fields, that have standards, and that have potential for running amok with tight oversight, you need to hire somebody who has been a director of parks and recreation. That's a key element. Then you can take your two people from DPW and train them. But you need a dedicated, experienced, skilled manager. Look at your other municipalities in the state of Georgia. They, those that have chosen to manage their own parks and recreation have a skilled, credentialed professional managing it, who is held accountable for the bottom line and the standards and quality of the plant maintenance. We as a city fail miserably in holding our management accountable for plant management. Let's not continue to repeat that trend. And it's fantastic news that all of you have moved the needle to take control of one of our most special assets, our parks and recreation, because this city could shine amazingly if we just set it up, organize it, and manage it properly. So please, programming, plant management. Thank you.
And just to clarify, because is that we are not looking to take over the programming at this point in time? We feel like that is an area that the, that the PSA does a good job with, and it also allows the interplay between the different cities, you know, throughout the county. When I was growing up, we pretty much just played teams within St. Mary's, you know? So having the countywide programming, and that is an area that is pretty well, they've pushed the fees on that over time, and it's pretty self-sustaining currently with the fees of the individual programs. And so it will certainly take some coordination to prepare fields for games and things, and knowing when, you know, with the PSA, we'll have to communicate, obviously, that when they need, need fields ready for play. But the actual programming, coaching, those kinds of things, you know, at this point in time, we're not going that far yet. Mainly it's maintenance and operations to improve the quality of what we've got. And as we get into this a little bit, you know, a recreation department is, is a, is a forethought, you know, but it's not where we're, it's not our stepping stone. Our first stepping stone is, is to take over and let's start trying to improve the quality of, of our facilities, so.
Jerry Bumbler, 805 Riverview Drive West. I really appreciate what you've got done with this PSA thing, because I watched for years... years and years where our parks just kinda degraded, and I think you've come to the right conclusion about what to do, and I appreciate the fact y'all are able to do that. The other thing is, I appreciate the fact that you're really focused on not only taking care of what we got, but improving what we got, so I'm pretty impressed with that decision y'all made. The other thing is, last I saw in SPO 9, there was $10 million set aside by the county for parks, we should get a chunk of that to spend like we want, not like the county wants.
Yes, sir, we are certainly negotiating that point, different conversations have come out about that, that they claim that they put that number together for four main parks, one was the Margaret Street Field, Lions Park in Kingsland, the city, the park in Woodbine, as well as Howard Peoples, and so at a, at a minimum, we're fighting for 25%, but we're fighting for the population split of that money, which would be closer to 33%, so.
I'd like to ask a question. Years ago, one of the best tennis courts that we had in the area besides the school was out there at Sweetwater Branch Recreation Authority. I don't know why it was taken up, but it was a great, it was a great tennis court. My question is, I know there's a lot of people like baseball, but how soon can we expect tennis courts, pickleball courts, and basketball courts, and even football fields?
Well, it's gone, it's gone, there's a lot of varying factors. Are you speaking directly to Sweetwater Park?
Well, I'm just saying for the City of St. Mary's.
What, we have talked about internally as far as staff, and this is what I was planning to roll out a little later on, and this is all in conversation phase right now, is our first thing is to get those tennis courts on the Aquatic Center, have those replaced.
Right, okay, it's good.
That, that's number one. There is a grant that comes out in the fall through Department of Natural Resources for Parks that we are working on. The first thing is getting the Margaret Street completely rehabbed, then from there, we'll, we're gonna take different parks along the way, move into, and the reason we're taking Margaret Street first, just to clarify, is when we move into the Aquatic Center, is that gives us time for development of a master plan for that park itself, not just looking at the future, looking at, at putting another swimming pool in, looking at, at how we can develop that park to get the best use out of the property. That would be like the second phase, if you will. Then from there, we would look at Sweetwater as far as what the potentials could be, i.e. pickleball courts, i.e. disc golf, if you will, down through the, some of the trails and, and the woods in the area, that is, that is real big right now, and other possibilities of ball fields on that property. I mean, it's a good-sized lot, but it's got a lot of overgrown, not overgrown, but it's got a lot of trees and, and underbrush and things of that nature that could be thinned out to make that, expand that park out even larger. So that's kinda what our thinking is at this point in time.
And I agree with you 100%, I just wanna make sure that we keep our focus on other things, i.e. tennis courts, because the one that they have now, you know, it's, if it could be rehabbed in a short...
We've had it, we've had it looked at, and we've had it looked at, we've also had the PSA had looked at it, and the recommendation was to take that all the way down and rebuild on site, that way you're assured that you've got the drainage that's necessary, so you don't have the problems with the special coatings on the courts popping up and things of that nature, you get a little bit longer wear and tear on the actual court itself, but that's, that's kinda where we're leaning at this point in time.
So with that being said, how many tennis courts are we talking about?
Initially, two.
We're talking about two?
The two that are sitting there now, basically totally rehabbed, are taking those down and building two new in the spot.
So are we talking about potentially building two more while we're building those two, or?
No, sir, not, not initially. We just get those two redone, and we just look at, take a harder look at the basketball court that's there.
And have we put a deadline or anything up, you know, to, to be able to get some of this stuff?
We're, we're trying to have everything in order and lined up, and actually have an RFP back, and we know who the vendor is by October, so we can pull the trigger, and we'll pull the trigger if it's, if it's not October 1st, but we are, we are actively working on those.
So we could potentially have tennis courts there by next February?
Next February?
Take that one.
Yeah, that's a stretch.
It's entirely possible.
Thank you.
What was the, I know we budgeted, I think, what was it, $147,000 to redo them, what is now, what it, to completely take them down and redo them entirely?
That was, that, that bid that we saw from PSA, that was taking them down.
Okay, just completely?
But we're, we've been talking to some other vendors and things, and looking at some other, some other alternatives to do, so.
Okay.
That's just a good budget number to work from at this point in time.
Are we gonna look at multi-use fields too, at Sweetwater or at some location, so that we have not only baseball fields, but a place for soccer?
Oh, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, I thought you were talking about something else, I apologize. Yes, ma'am, we are, that is part of the conversations. We, actually at GMA, we were, we ran into a vendor that had a small one for, like soccer for the little types, I don't know what you call the youngest ones, but it's really, you could use, actually use, they take a, a tennis court and they convert it into like a, it can be soccer fields, it's got walls up and stuff, it's, it's just conversations and part of the process of developing a master plan for the parks, I apologize.
Okay, gonna need to wrap this up so we can get reset for our, our next meeting, so thank everybody for the discussion and, and the comments, and we'll be bringing something before council soon to kinda move this process along, we have a meeting tomorrow with PSA to kinda let them know that this is kinda definitely the direction we're, we're moving in, and they need to be prepared to come with us, so, thank you.